Good evening. And welcome to this regular city council meeting. Today is Monday, the 22nd. I'd like to call this meeting to order and I ask the clerk to please call a roll.
Councilwoman Vaziri.
Present.
Councilman Campopiano.
Present.
Councilman Banano.
Present.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Present.
Councilwoman Heroyan.
Present.
Councilman Anduhar.
Present.
Councilman Ritz.
Present.
Councilman Traficanti.
Present.
Council President Wall.
Here. This time I'd ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, next we're going to move on to the approval of minutes. At this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to take the first six minutes items that are indicated here as a block, leaving out the September 11th special council meeting. Do I have a motion to take that as a block?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilwoman Vaziri.
Present.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Banano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council President Wall.
Yes. Next, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve that block.
Motion to approve the block.
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Vaziri.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Banano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council President Wall.
Yes. Now, I understand there was a scribness error on number seven, which would be the minutes for the September 11th, 2025 special city council meeting. Let me just take a motion to approve so we can discuss it. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Councilwoman Heroyan.
The wrong time was noted. It was 8:22. It should be 6:22.
Can we amend that just as a scribness error, attorney?
To amend?
Okay, motion, amend it.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, there being none, clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilwoman Vaziri.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Banano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council President Wall.
Yes. Now, a motion to approve the September 11th, 2025 special city council meeting minutes as amended.
Motion to...
Second.
The September 11th meeting as amended.
And I heard Traffic, Councilman Traficanti second it. Any further discussion? There being none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Vaziri.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Banano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council President Wall.
Yes. Next, we're going to move on to public acknowledgements and commendations. We did have three of them on the ballot tonight, but we're only going to have one. The citation for the Cranston West Little League 11 to 12-year-olds, this is going to be moved, girls softball will be moved to next month. And also, the citation of congratulations to the Cranston East Boys Volleyball Team, D1 state champions, they will also be moved to next month. However, we do have some citations to deliver. If I could ask Councilwoman Graziano to come up to the podium. Good evening. Tonight, we have the honor of saying congratulations as a council to the Cranston East Little League nine-and-under Sally Eddy champions, Boys Little League. At first, if I could ask the coaches to please come on up here, that would be David Graziano, Ray Leon, Matt Generali, and the manager Zachary Rea, if you could come up.
Good evening, Council President and members of the city council and our families of Cranston East Little League. I'd like to take a moment to celebrate an incredible accomplishment by our very own Cranston East Little League nine-year-old All-Star team. The summer they competed in the 31st Annual Sally Eddy Friendship Tournament, a competition that brings teams together from eight different leagues across the state. Our kids rose to the challenge and then some, winning the championship in a dominant fashion in just four easy innings. Now, as exciting as winning is, and it is very exciting, what really stands out that at such a young age, these kids are learning how to play together as a team. That's a real victory here. They're discovering that when you teach each other, when you communicate, when you trust each other, and when you work hard together, the results speak for themselves. It's a real-life lesson, just as much as a baseball lesson. I am so proud of each player on this roster, and I'll admit, I'm a little biased because my son Aiden is on the team. But let's just say, the trophy may be heavy, but the smiles that evening were even bigger. So tonight, let's applaud these young athletes for their accomplishments. They are proof that Cranston is not only a city of strong neighborhoods and communities, but also of strong teams. They are proof that effort, teamwork, and community can support, can take you far. Congratulations to all of them, their coaches, manager, and family. You make Cranston proud. Best of luck as you all move up and move forward as athletes. The council president will call your name. One at a time, you can come up and stand up here.
Let's hope I can pronounce everybody's name correctly. As a teacher, I'm really good at mispronouncing names. First, Aiden Graziano. Bennett Rea. Roman Leon. Trevor Generali. Xavier Cano. Julius Blanco. Jean Ramos. Julian Caredo. De'ani Rivera. Adam Almonte. Alex Almonte. And Omni Bieto. Oh, that's Samantha. All right, if you'd like to come up and take pictures, by all means, congratulations. Job well done. Now, you're certainly welcome to stay, but I'd understand if you'd want to leave at this time. All right, next item of business on the agenda tonight would be public hearing. Public hearing on docketed matters only. If anyone is in chambers this evening who would like to make public comment, please step up to the podium. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address, dress for the record. Is there anyone in chambers who would like to make public comment this evening on docketed matters?
Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the city council. For the record, Robert Murray, attorney at 21 Garden City Drive in Cranston. I'm just here to make the council aware I'm present this evening on ordinance 072506, the change of zone for 1746 Cranston Street. We had a very good hearing before the ordinance committee 11 days ago, and we provided quite a bit of information. I have no other formal presentation tonight, but if during the course of your deliberations, if any questions come up, I would be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else in chamber this evening who would like to make public comment? Seeing none, Thomas, anyone online who would like to make public comment?
There is no public comment online.
So at this time, I'm going to close public comment. Moving on, there are no resolutions this evening. At this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to take this agenda out of order.
Motion to take the agenda out of order.
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilwoman Vaziri.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Banano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council President Wall.
Yes. Okay, we're going to move to, let's see if I can do this correctly, page five, item 16. Under nomination and election of the council vice president for the term of January 4th, 2027. This time, I'm calling for anyone who would like to make nominations for the office of city council vice president.
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Kristen Heroyan for vice president of city council.
Second.
There is a second. Are there any other nominations for the office of vice president of the city council? There being none, the nominations are closed at this time. Clerk, would you please call a roll on the nomination of Kristen Heroyan as council vice president?
Councilwoman Vaziri.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano. Councilman Banano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan.
Abstain.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council President Wall.
Yes. Congratulations, Councilwoman. So let the record reflect that Councilwoman Kristen Heroyan has been duly elected to the office of council vice president by a unanimous vote. Well, almost unanimous because she didn't vote for herself. A unanimous vote of the Cranston City Council. And I say congratulations. I've worked with Councilwoman Heroyan a great deal, and I look forward to working with her closely again. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to go back to page three, and we're going to go to committee reports, all right? And under committee reports, there'll be a report from the claims chair, which would be myself. The claims committee did in fact meet on September 8th, 2025. The paid claims report has been contained in your packet, and there's no further, there's no further things to report on that matter. Next, we'll go to council vice president Heroyan as safety service chair. The floor is yours, Councilwoman.
Thank you. We did have a meeting on September 8th, and we voted SBV liquor license for Brewology LLC located at 160 Atwood Avenue. Because we are over the cap for liquor licenses, I am asking for a vote to approve that.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the Class B BV liquor license?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, I ask the clerk to please call a roll.
Councilwoman Vaziri.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Banano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council President Wall.
Yes. Thank you, council, council vice president Heroyan. The next item will be a report from the finance committee chair, which would be myself. We did consider several items that evening. First one we considered would be a resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements. It was requested by the tax assessor. It passed the finance committee on September 8th. I recommend passage. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made. And second, any discussion? There being none, clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilwoman Vaziri.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Banano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council President Wall.
Yes. Next, we have a resolution, pardon me, a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatement. It was requested by the tax assessor. It passed the finance committee on September 8th. I recommend passage. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Is there any discussion on it? I see none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Vaziri.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Banano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council President Wall.
Yes. Next would be a report from the chair, Councilwoman Graziano, of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Council President. Public Works Committee did meet on September 11th, 2025, and the only thing I have to report is that we had many conversations about rats.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Moving right on along, we have a report from the chair of the ordinance Moving right on along, we have a report from the Chair of the Ordinance Committee, Councilman Anduhar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ordinance Committee did meet on September 11, and we talked about ordinance 072506, ordinance in the amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled zoning. This was the change of zone for 1746 Cranston Street. I urge passage.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made, and second, any discussion? Councilwoman Graziano.
Thank you, Council President. I'll just reiterate that, you know, we thought of this as a favorable opportunity for Cranston, but I'm still going to make a note about stormwater and holding you guys to stormwater management standards. So just want to put that on the record.
Any further comment? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Vaziri.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Banano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano. Councilwoman Horryan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council President Wall.
Yes. All right, moving right along, we're going to go into public comment on undocketed items. Is there anyone in chambers who would like to make public comment on things that are not on the docket? If so, please step up to the microphone. Be heard, you'll have three minutes. State your name and address for the record. I see none. Tom, is anyone online who would like to make public comment on undocketed items?
There is no public comment online.
Okay, so I'm going to close undocketed items public comment, and we're going to move on to the election and appointment of city officials. At this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Sarah Porres, I'm going to say, I think.
Pareka.
Pareka, thank you. I was looking for that help there. To the Cranston Art Commission for a three-year unexpired term ending June 24, 2028. This was requested by Councilman Banano. Councilman Banano.
I just wanted to put this lovely lady's name forward. The Chair of the Cranston Arts Commission had contacted me and had asked for this nomination. As a former Chair of a board and commission in our city, I take their recommendations very seriously. They kind of know what their committee is doing more than we do, and she has a very impressive resume. I had the opportunity to speak to Ms. Pareka. She, you know, she's got a quite impressive resume. She's really ready to do this work. She's looking forward to being on the Arts Commission. She's got a lot of great ideas that she's going to bring forward. So I urge passage.
So move.
Second.
Okay, so that's a motion to approve the appointment, correct? Okay, and there is a second. Any further discussion on this item? There be a nun, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call a roll.
Councilwoman Vaziri.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Banano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horryan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council President Wall.
Yes. All right, next item would be the reappointment of David W. Gukowit for, by the Council President, to the Historical Semataries Commission. That would be me, of course, for the term of October 24, 2025 through October 24, 2028. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Oh, hold on. Timeout. Oh, oh, I didn't need anyone. I appreciate the point. And anyway, so that's just for, I did not see that, no vote. Okay, that's just for the record. All right, moving on. Under Report of City Offices, there are none. Executive Communications. The Legal Espence and Analysis Report was contained in your packet from July 1, 2025 through July 16, 2025. There is no vote on that. If anybody has any questions? I'm not seeing any. All right, so if not, if I see none, I'm going to move on to the next item. Next item is Council President Communications. The first item would be the announcement of the new Majority Leader. I'm going to turn the floor over to the Council Vice President Horryan for that.
Thank you. The Democratic members of the Cranston City Council have selected a distinguished community leader to serve as the capacity of our Majority Leader during the 2025 through 2026 City Council term, and that would be Councilwoman Graziano.
Thank you, Council Vice President Horryan, and congratulations to the Councilwoman Graziano. The only other update I have is within the next week or so, I'll be reaching out to the various members of the City Council with any changes that will be made in committees by the, my role is different, so I'm going to have to fill some of those spots. I'll probably call in those people affected and make those changes. So we're going to move on to Council Member Communications, and I see that Councilman Ritz has an item on the floor. Councilman Ritz, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I added speeding here. Speeding on Hope Road, I've spoken about it before, continues to be the number one issue in my area, speeding, particularly Hope Road. We had a traffic study done previously, and it showed that 62% of the vehicles that they monitored were going at least 20, at least 10 miles over the 25 miles an hour speed limit. So the average was 37 miles. I also visited a resident on Hope Road, 1439 Hope Road. He lived on one of the bends, and I spent some time sitting in his driveway so I could see the cars flying around the blind spots over there and the safety issues that that creates. So since then, through the administration, I did speak to the traffic engineer, and I did speak to the police chief, and with them, they did have some suggestions on things we could do. I wanted to share them tonight to get some feedback on them. So particularly with Hope Road, the traffic engineer said we should break it into three zones and do a traffic study. Phoenix to Pippin Orchard, Pippin Orchard to Burlingame, and Burlingame to Seven Mile Road. He feels this will help isolate the issues, and we can justify targeted intervention in those certain areas. There's kind of three different issues going on there based on the road. Some are windy, some are straightaway with speeding. He also recommended road narrowing and restriping. So he suggested by fresh striping and bringing in the road a little bit would help deter some of the speeding, more so than speed bumps and some of the other things. They've done this in other cities. He cited some of that with me, too. And by making the road tighter, it forces them to go slower through a longer stretch of it. Radar speed signs, again, you know, having that there voluntarily helps people slow down in there. And then 80, the 85, the 85th percentile of drivers were over the speed limit by 10 miles an hour. So it was recommended, and the police department supported it, to raising the speed limit from 25 miles an hour to 40 miles an hour. They felt it was a more responsible speed limit for that area, and they thought by actually raising it, people would adhere to it more. They also suggested a citywide campaign to promote the enforcement of those things. Once they had. I did speak to Colonel Winquist, did support many of these. He did think the road narrowing and raising the speed limit were two things that he thought would make a difference there, too. So I wanted to share those with everybody because I think we have similar roads like this throughout the city. I think of Natick Ave as another one that's very similar to this in my area. So I think if we tested some of these items here and they work, we could look at using those throughout the city in different areas, too. So I did submit these to Director Moretti, too, to see if we can look at implementing.
Director, did you want to weigh in at all on these, or you're well set at this time?
Yeah, I have spoken with and met with the Colonel, the traffic engineer, and the DPW Director. Some of the mitigation measures that we could implement would include, one other thing I'm not sure if you mentioned, is increased traffic enforcement. Police is very willing to do that. Correct, it is showing it is that there's areas on Hope Road that is speeding. Certainly, the police, and we could do it also with the city and the council folks in terms of social media alerts or notifications. The road narrowing actually is not an option, speaking with the traffic engineer, because there's no, there's no further narrowing. You're just going to have head-on collisions if that were the case. In front of the school, recently in August, they put in some dotted lines that could, to delineate the road better because it widens as the entrance and exit into Hope Highlands. So that is in place. Any changes in the road, if there's paving, we'll speak in a second, they'll be put up there. Also, we could post the 20 miles per hour speed limit signs in the school, in the school zones. We can also do that. There is a, we have, there's two radar speed signs, and one of them is, it was, I guess, hit by a car. But we'll get that one operational, can do that. And I found interesting that in order to alleviate speeding by increasing the speed limit, that's an interesting thought. You'll have less speeding if you increase the speed limit. That one is a bit, that one would probably be advised if we were going outside consultant to conduct this, a real speed study, a traffic study, which would cost tens of thousands of dollars by doing that. But at the same time, I'm not sure if that's going to encourage greater speeding or not. But unfortunately, Hope Road is an area where it's so much of it is social engineering and that the people that are responsible drivers will basically be compliant, and irresponsible drivers will continue to be irresponsible regardless of what you do. But in terms of the measures that I just described, how about if we go ahead and we implement those to help mitigate the situation? It won't be absolutely complete, but certainly police is alerted to it, and the Colonel is more than happy to increase vigilance in that area.
I think that's great. That's fantastic. Thank you, I appreciate it.
If you want to, really, we could do to solve speeding in the city of Cranston is increase speed limits, so there'll be no speeding in the city of Cranston.
It was a different thought, too. I didn't expect that one.
Jenny, I chuckled on that one.
Thank you, Director. Councilman Ritz, are we pretty much set? Any other members of the council like to make any comment? Because speeding is a concern all over the city, as the Director rightly said. Councilwoman Horryan.
I agree speeding is a problem, but I can't even think of increasing the speed limit near a middle school.
It was the area.
I believe he's making, it was after. I believe that was a joke. Any other comments? I see Councilman Banano and then Councilman Anduhar.
Yeah, I just, my wife teaches at Hope Highlands, and I don't mention that for any reason besides the fact that many times there are kids walking from the school to the fields on the sidewalk or on the, on the side of the road where, you know, there's a sidewalk there. So on the side of the road where the sidewalk should be. So, you know, I think raising the speed limit to mitigate speeding is a joke. That road, in its entirety, being 25 miles an hour, also a little bit of a joke. You know, nobody drives 25 miles an hour. But if we are to look at the speed limits, I think, you know, if anything, the school's speed limit, the school area, you know, I just want to go on record saying that should remain 25 miles an hour, even be moved to 20 with, as the Director said, more markings on the road and a lot more safety in that particular area. Not for the fact only that there's a school there, but for the fact that there are kids walking to gym class in the warmer weather, you know, up to the fields and whatnot on the sidewalk to get to where they take physical education. So just wanted to go on record by saying that. I think everything you mentioned, great ideas, everything Frank mentioned, also wonderful ideas with that section. If we're going to start somewhere, that's probably the most important section on Hope Road. Thank you.
Director, did you want to make some comment on that?
Please, I, actually, I was just checking my notes. There's one other measure that we will now plan on implementing is a stencil on the road approaching the school and leaving the school to say "school." Stenciled on the road itself, so right around the school to help to add to some school safety. I failed to mention that a minute ago.
Thank you, Director. Councilman Anduhar.
No, I feel for the children going to school and for my constituents on Crawford and Lauraville, speed bumps.
I hate, any other comment on this issue?
Mr. Chairman.
I saw, I did not see Councilman Traficanti.
Mr. Moretti, what percentage of the population at Hope Highlands actually walks to school?
Councilman, I don't know. We'd probably maybe have to ask the school department that.
I don't think, I can't recall any portion of the population.
If I may, through the Chair, all I can tell you is, because my wife works there, it's low. It's very low. What I was referring to was while kids are in school during physical education class, they will walk to the fields, to Chafee Complex, to take part in phys ed. But I think, you know, it's not zero, but it's extremely low. Most of them either take the bus or get dropped off.
Thank you. Councilman Traficanti, is you pretty much set? Okay, any other comments? I see Councilman Campopiano.
Thank you, Council President. I do agree that in the school area, we have to be attentive to that area, especially, obviously, when school's in. But is this a perceived problem with the speeding, or is this a problem? I'd like to see some type of a study, is, I mean, are there several accidents in that area, in these areas? I know those speed limits, and it's ridiculous it sounds, raising the speed limit. These speed limits were put in when cars took 300 yards to stop, and that's why they were set at this point. Cars nowadays are so smooth, so quiet, that you don't even realize. So I am an advocate of the signs that tell you and post your speed because they do alert you to, I mean, I'm guilty. I find myself, you get the radio on, you're moving, and you find yourself, oh, boy, I'm doing 35 rather than 25, and it's very easy to do. So, and that sign does alert you sometimes that you are doing that. So I am an advocate for the, excuse me, we'll try, but for an advocate that those types of signs, they would help. But I would like to know, is, is, is there a lot of traffic problems and accidents because of excessive speeds in these roads? And I'd like to see that analyzed and find out that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Has any other comment? I'll add my two cents to this matter. I do appreciate Councilman Ritz bringing this up, and I especially like the way he prefaced his statements, that these are strategies that were brought to his attention that could be implemented throughout the city. Because I, for one, will tell you, I hear a lot of complaints about speeding. The idea of raising the speed limit does not jive well with me. I'll tell you that right now. In school areas, most of my areas have no sidewalks. So children, walkers, people with animals, they're walking, and sometimes people are driving too fast, and they're also, I can't prove it. I don't know if I have studied, but there's a lot of people who are distracted with cell phones, et cetera, right now. So I appreciate the Councilman bringing this up. All right? Okay, we're going to move on from there to, okay, introduction to new business. I'm going to take a motion to take the new business as a block with the exception of ordinance 092506. That is being withdrawn at the request of the sponsor. Do I have a motion to take the new business as a block?
Motion to take the new business as a block. Second.
Any discussion? There be a nun. Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilwoman Vaziri.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Banano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horryan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council President Wall.
Yes. Now I'm looking for a motion to approve that block.
Motion to approve the block. Second.
Oh, let me, let me say it properly. Motion to approve the block and to move it to the appropriate committees.
Motion to approve the block and move it to the appropriate committees. Second.
Okay, any discussion? There be a nun clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilwoman Vaziri.
Yes.
Councilman Campopiano.
Yes.
Councilman Banano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horryan.
Yes.
Councilman Anduhar.
Yes.
Councilman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilman Traficanti.
Yes.
Council President Wall.
Yes. Next, we're going to go to some informational items way back on the sixth page. Next, we're going to go to some informational items, way back in the six bay. Yes, Councilman Traficanti.
Just want to explain to the council why I'm withdrawing that particular ordinance. Councilman Andujar and I are meeting with the residents in that area very shortly, along with the major. I spoke with the chief on this. So we're trying to resolve the issue without creating an ordinance or bringing it to the public's attention. So it's been going on for almost three years now, so we're trying to assist these people at the same time of not damage any kind of training that the police are entitled to and need. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Councilman, and appreciate that proactive way of action. Okay, moving right on, for informational items, there will be no vote on this. First, we have the resignation of Jesse Dooley from the Board of Contracts and Purchase. That would be effective on August 25, 2025, which is past, and the resignation of our own Amelia Vaziri from the Juvenile Hearing Board, effective September 16, 2025. I believe there is no further business before the council this evening, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Good night, and thank you.